Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynda Dusset Ashman and I'm the current co-president of the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. My co-president Janice Starr and I want to welcome you to this League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the upcoming School Board Trustee Election on Tuesday, May 15th. The candidates in this election are running for two seats on the Scarsdale Board of Education. The candidates and the seats they are seeking are as follows. Allison Tepper Singer, SBNC nominee to fill the office last held by Pamela Fuhrer. Pamela Fuhrer to fill the office last held by Arthur Rublin. And Woody Crouch, SBNC nominee to fill the office last held by Arthur Rublin. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization which promotes political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League is nonpartisan in that it does not support or oppose any candidate for public office. It is political in that it takes positions on selected governmental issues after serious member study and consensus. I want to recognize the members of the League of Women Voters Subcommittee who organized this event. Our Voter Services Portfolio Co-Chairs Amy Cooper and Ronnie Hirsch, who I think is outside the door, and League members Diane Baylor, Leah Dembitzer, and Mary Beth Evans, who are at the back table. Our timekeeper for this evening is Amy Cooper. Time limits will be conscientiously enforced by our moderator. So the timekeeper is sitting in the first row so all candidates can easily keep track of the time when giving their statements and answers. I want to remind everyone, the School Board and School Budget Election is Tuesday, May 15th, at the Scarsdale Middle School. The polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And just a little bit of voter information. Voter registration. Remember, you must be a U.S. citizen, at least 18 years old, and have lived at your present address for at least 30 days, and be registered with either the Westchester County Board of Elections or the school district's Board of Registration to vote in this election. Your mailed voter registration form must be received by the County Board of Elections in time to be processed by the date of the vote, which again is May 15th. If you are choosing to register with the school district Board of Registration, then you have until May 10th to finalize your registration. The school district Board of Registration is also providing onsite registration Tuesday, May 8th from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Thursday, May 10th from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please remember, if you have already registered with the County Board of Elections, you do not need to register with the school district's Board of Registration. Absentee ballot information. If you will not be here to vote in person on May 15th, you may apply for an absentee ballot application from the school district clerk's office by phone or mail immediately. Please note that this is a two-step process. You must apply for your absentee ballot, and then you must receive, complete, submit, and have your absentee ballot received by the school district clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on Election Day, which is May 15th. There are additional details that are both on the school district website and on the League of Women Voters website. And the school district clerk's name is Honoree Adams. The absentee ballots must be delivered to the school district clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 15th. And if you have questions, Honoree Adams' phone number is (721) 2410, or her email is haddams@scarsdellschool.org. Thank you so much, and the League encourages all eligible Scarsdale citizens to vote. Last but certainly not least, I will introduce our moderator for this forum, Mr. Stephen Cohen. Mr. Cohen is president of the League of Women Voters of White Plains. He is an experienced League moderator and was our moderator for our Village Election Candidate Forum. We are very happy to have him back with us here tonight, and with that, I turn the program over to you.
Thank you, Lynda. Well, good evening and welcome to the Scarsdale Village School Board Candidates Forum. As Lynda said, I am Stephen Cohen, president of the White Plains League of Women Voters. I'll be the moderator for this evening's program. This forum will be recorded in its entirety by Scarsdale Public TV and will be available for viewing on the Scarsdale Public TV website and the Scarsdale Public Access TV channel. Other than this, recording of this event is prohibited. No candidate or any other individual will be allowed to use or edit media footage of the forum for campaign purposes. No campaign materials, including campaign buttons, are permitted inside this room or directly outside. Please silence all cell phones and mobile devices at this time. Please withhold applause or other expressions of support or disagreement during this event. The candidates have drawn lots for the order of speaking. The reverse order will be used for closing statements. The order of answering questions will be rotated among the candidates. There will be no period for rebuttal. Each candidate will have 1 minute and 30 seconds for an opening statement and the same amount of time for a closing statement. Candidates may bring a single sheet of paper to be used only for their opening statements. The forum will follow a traditional question-and-answer format with timed responses. All candidates will be asked the same question, and each will be given 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond. A candidate will be allowed to finish the sentence once started, but the moderator will enforce strict time limits. If a candidate does not use all the time allotted for a response, the unused time may not be applied to any other purpose or question. Time cards will be used by a timekeeper to alert the moderator and candidates when there are 30 seconds response time remaining and when time has expired. Audience questions were collected just prior to the start and will be collected throughout the evening. If you wish to submit a question, you may do so on an index card available in the lobby. Questions will be sorted by a panel of three League Committee members based on relevancy to the office, topic, and redundancy. A representative set of questions will be selected to encompass as wide an array of topics as possible in the allotted time. Questions will be eliminated if they contain either inappropriate language or disparaging remarks. All questions will be asked by the moderator. Candidates will not interrupt one another or the moderator during the forum. The moderator has the authority to pause the proceedings to enforce the ground rules and format. Candidates were not provided with any of the questions in advance. Except for time limits, the only restriction on the candidate's statements and question answers is respect and civility. We will begin now with opening statements from each candidate. Mr. Crouch, you may begin.
Good evening. I have lived in Scarsdale for over 40 years. I came here when I was quite young, and contrary to the rumors, I am not 80 years old. I have five grandchildren in the schools. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York, and I graduated from Columbia University with a master's in mechanical engineering. I have decades of board service in Scarsdale. I've served on the Drake Edgewood Board as a board member, as president. I've served as chairman of SNAP, and I've served as chairman of the Edgewood Athletic Association. I've also served on the Sturgess Webber Foundation, which is a foundation that deals with a rare disease that is very degenerative. It affects the brain, and it results in seizures and delayed development, and in some instances, death, is what my grandson, Michael, died of. I've been a member of the U.S. Society on Dams, which is the largest dam society in the world, and I... Oh, you threw me off there, I'm sorry. On the dam society, I'm a life member of the dam society. I served as chairman of the Construction Committee. I served as a board member, and I was elected and served as their president. On the construction front, I built 10 power plants in New York City in nine months. Anybody that knows anything about construction and about working in New York City knows that's really not possible, but I did that. Can I make up for that time I lost? I'll need more, two more sentences. Okay. Congressman Molinari and I debated years ago, and after the debate on building a power plant, everything was fine. And years later, I went to build another power plant on Staten Island, and I went into the borough president's office, and it was Congressman Molinari, except now he was the borough president. He told my chairman, "If Woody Crouch is going to build this plant, I will support it. He's a guy I trust." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Singer.
Thank you. I want to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters for offering all of us this wonderful opportunity to be here tonight. I also want to thank all of you for coming out to hear our positions, and I also want to thank the members of the School Board Nominating Committee for nominating me to serve on the School Board. I have lived in the Quaker Ridge section of Scarsdale for 18 years. I have two daughters, both of whom went through Scarsdale schools, but had very different experiences. Our older daughter, Jody, was diagnosed with autism when she was two years old, and so she utilized all of the special education services really that Scarsdale has to offer, from the special classes in Fox Meadow and Edgewood to the special class in the middle school, and then the special class in the high school. Our younger daughter, Lauren, was really able to take advantage of all of the amazing opportunities that Scarsdale offers, like advanced topics classes, the Speech and Debate Team—I see members of the Speech and Debate Team here tonight—and our wonderful science research program. So I have had the opportunity to experience the Scarsdale schools from two very different vantage points, and I think that gives me a unique perspective. I'm running for the Board because I am incredibly grateful for the wonderful education that both of my daughters received, and now that they are both out of the house and I have more time, I want to pay that forward and make sure that I can keep our schools strong and safe learning environments.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer.
Thank you. Thank you, League. For 14 years, I've dedicated myself as a Board of Education member, PTA leader, and longtime community volunteer because I care deeply about Scarsdale, our children, and our schools. I believe that my depth of experience as a community leader, knowledge as a former business professional, and insight as a parent with children in the schools enable me to serve well. Our School Board has important work to do. The cap on state and local tax deductions is of paramount concern. This issue must be kept in the forefront and involve clear communication and community input. We need to balance taxes with quality programs that support the district's vision, and we will be considering the charitable contribution fund. We have significant construction plans. While direct supervision of construction projects doesn't fall to the Board, I'm committed to helping ensure that community expectations are met. I participated in every discussion and forum on the 2018 bond, and I attended every Green Acres Building Committee meeting last fall. I know the details. The Board needs to continue its work evaluating the health and safety of our schools, assessing teaching and learning, supporting professional development, meeting facilities and infrastructure needs, reworking policies, and negotiating contracts. Community participation is essential. I'm approachable and available in the community. My knowledge and experience will help me make informed and well-reasoned decisions about these significant issues. I'm excited to continue dedicating my time and skills to support the forward direction of our schools and ensure an excellent education for all Scarsdale students.
Thank you, Ms. Fuhrer. At this time, the candidates should put away the papers with their opening statements if they've been using them. And at this time, I will ask a series of questions from the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale, and we will begin the first question with Ms. Singer. What are the three most pressing issues facing our school district in the next few years, and as a trustee, how would you address each of them?
So I think the three most pressing issues are safety, mental health, and wellness. And as a trustee, I would bring my 15 years of experience focused on these types of issues to decisions before the Board. I think that we have spent—we have—the Board in the last few months has responded quite well, in my opinion, to what has happened in Parkland, the Parkland School in Florida. I really appreciated that they took swift action to provide for a new director of security and to allocate funds for the visitor registration system. But we need to go beyond just the physical focus on safety, and we need to think about prevention. We need to be making sure that we have systems in place in our district so that no students feel left behind, so that we can tackle issues of bullying before they get out of the... I've heard many parents in this district who are very concerned about bullying that's taking place at upper grade, elementary schools, and all of the other things. I've traveled to districts all over the country looking at these issues, and while Scarsdale is definitely ahead of the curve, there's still a lot that we can do to make sure that we are supporting the mental health needs and creating a safety net for all of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer.
The three most pressing issues in front of us right now are the non-deductibility of all of our state and local taxes, traffic and safety problems around our schools, and also sustainability as it relates to student engagement and curricular and programmatic development, our facilities, and also community partnerships. And the way that we should be addressing all these issues is with regular and direct communication from the district and ongoing requests for feedback from the community. The non-deductibility issue is of paramount concern. We need to make sure our empty nesters can remain. They're a critical component to the health and functioning of this village, so we need to budget to support our vision, looking at quality programming, at our operating expenses, at efficiencies, economies of scale, potentially shared services, in-sourcing versus outsourcing costs, and also we are considering the charitable contribution fund. Traffic around the schools has come from a lot of key stakeholders. This is a village issue, and the village should participate in this. We need a community to look at all the different components of the problem at each school and brainstorm solutions. Short-term effort now would go a long way. Sustainability—we rebooted our sustainability committee last October at an open community meeting, and we now have a plan to engage the community around the question, "How can our community engage in sustainability as an enduring context for learning?"
Thank you. Mr. Crouch.
I think the first one that I would put on my list is safety of our children. Things that have happened throughout this country have got us all concerned about that. I believe there are two issues to that. One is the safety that we as a community will provide to the children through secure facilities, and the other is the mental health issue. Mental health is also a big issue with this, and I think that we need to be focusing on that also. What I saw with Sturgess Webber is that children that are developmentally delayed need more help, and I think we have to make sure that we put the services out there that we need to help these children. My second issue would be traffic, to be very frank about it. I have been here a long time, and when it's time for school to begin or time for school to end, the traffic in those areas is very, to me, dangerous. And I'm still amazed that we have been very lucky that none of our children have been really hurt badly by that. So I think that safety, driving around the schools are two big issues. The other to me is the infrastructure. I think our infrastructure is 100 years old, and I think that we need a master plan to evaluate all of our infrastructures going forward, and that we develop a plan to take those infrastructures into the modern world.
Thank you. The second question, we will begin with Ms. Fuhrer. As a trustee, how will you be accessible and responsive to individual community members and local community groups?
Being accessible and available to community input is incredibly important. We need to understand the values and the priorities of every community member, and we can't guess them. We need to be told by the community members what they're thinking about. There's so many different ways that this can happen. First is indirectly through budgeting decisions, we learn what the community values. When we go through our budget process, which begins each November, we are talking about program development. We're talking about our vision, and we're talking about the various components of that vision. We did a survey back in 2016 and asked the community, "What were the topics of interest for investment?", and we heard that steam, technology, and world language were the top three areas of interest. We will continue to survey the community to find out those values. In addition, being out and about in the community makes a big difference. Not only because I have children in the schools, I go to a lot of events, but I also like to attend a lot of community events simply to be present, and people come up to me all the time and talk to me about past decisions of the Board, and I'm absolutely happy to communicate on those, and they talk to me about upcoming issues, and I listen. I'm an active listener. I can understand what they are talking about. I take away emotion, and I get their points, and I bring that into all of my decision-making on the Board.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch.
I will make myself available to all the members of the community. I will go to the different areas, talk with folks, and if anybody comes up to me and has any questions about what's going on with the Board, I will speak with them, and I will discuss them with them. I will give them as much information as I possibly can. I'll ask them questions to see if I can find out what they're interested in and what their concerns are. At the Board meetings, I would take the position at the Board meetings that if anybody wants to talk with us and ask us questions, we take those questions in a very respectful manner, and we treat them properly, and that we respond to them as clearly as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Singer.
I absolutely agree that it's important for all of the trustees to be accessible in the community. When I was the chair of Scarsdale Child, I received a ton of calls from parents of kids with special needs, as well as visits when I was in Balducis or the Metro Diner, and I welcome that. But I want to speak about another type of community input, and that has to do with the public comment at the Board meetings. In my professional life, I'm the president of the Autism Science Foundation. I am pretty much a professional advocate. I spend a lot of my time giving public comment, and it is very disheartening when you travel to Albany or you travel to New York City to give public comment and you don't feel like it's heard. When people give public comment, it's because they feel deeply about an issue. It's because they are invested in that issue, and most often, it's because they have specific expertise in that issue. When you are a member of the Board, you have to be a generalist, but when you give public comment, you are really the expert. So I think it's incredibly important, as a trustee, to not only listen to the public comment, but to consider it very carefully, and to consider those who take the time and expend their energy giving public comment a full listen to, and to show them the respect that they deserve.
Thank you. This next question, we will begin with Mr. Crouch. After observing the most recent bond and budget processes, what aspects of these processes would you encourage the Board or administration to change for future years?
Well, I've looked at that, and I've thought about it, quite frankly, a lot. And there are a couple of things that I would do. And one is I would start the process earlier, and I would get community involvement earlier. I would be more—I would be consistent with how we go about this. I would make sure that when we had the community involved in the process, that we listen carefully to them, that we give them time to raise their issues, and that we treat them with respect, and that we follow up on them. We don't just take them and write them down and forget about them. And I think that the process got to be laid out in a way that you can really make it happen. When I talked earlier about the infrastructure and the system, and that we've got these 100-year-old schools that we have to develop, I think we need a master plan for that, and I think we need to take that plan and take it to the community early on, but before we do that, we need to try to do the best job we can at putting that plan together. And then, once we've got the plan together, we use our abilities to get out into the community and give that plan to the members of the community, visit the local schools, visit the local PTAs, and get their feedback of what they really think needs to be done with the infrastructure for our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Singer.
I think the budgeting process that the district uses is a good one. I believe in ground-up budgeting. I think there is a good amount of opportunity for the administration and the Board to hear from the community. As I mentioned earlier, I am a big believer in getting a wide variety and array of public input, and not only listening to that input, but heeding that input. I think that the process has to be a very fluid one, and I really respected the Board's decision this year to—even though the budget process was almost closed—to recognize that we needed to add additional funds for new security measures and to update Butlerfield. So, you know, I think that the budget process is something that—even though there's a budget season—it's something that Board members should be thinking about year-round. And I think it's—as with all issues that come before the Board, I think it's important to approach it with an open mind, with listening ears, and willingness to heed public comment.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer.
Thank you. I think that processes for both bond development and budget development should be very clearly scheduled so that the community knows when meetings are to happen and what's expected at those meetings. The community should always know that all discussions to bonds and budget are based on our vision, and so the community needs to understand our vision, and a Board needs to be very clear on the components of the vision and why all our work is going to the goals towards supporting the vision. So at all of the meetings leading up to the budget—this is a year-long process. I guess we take the summers off, but starting in October, the buildings start meeting about their budget needs, and they start talking about what they need to do at their buildings differently, what changes they want to see, and that comes forward. Community input starts in November, and then we hear all about the long-term budgeting trends starting in December. It's a long process with lots of opportunity for community participation and input that can come at the podium via email and in Balducis. And all of that input comes to the table, and it's considered, and it's discussed, and if there are questions out there, we get the answers, and we make sure that all the facts and all the input are weighed and considered. We're not always going to come to a decision that everybody likes, but we're going to come to one that supports our vision, and we're going to come to one that's fiscally prudent, and that's based on community input.
Thank you. This next question, we will begin with Ms. Singer. And it is, "Budgetary pressures on public school districts have led to an increased use of private gifts from individuals and organizations. How would you ensure that community priorities and values, including our district motto 'non-sibby', 'not-for-self', govern Board decisions?"
Well, for one thing, I think that when people make donations, they do so to support the mission of an organization and not necessarily to see their name on a plaque. So this issue about—that has come before the Board with regard to recognizing donations from the foundation, you know, my feeling is people donate because they want the schools to be stronger, they want the schools to have the best possible resources, but I really—I mean, my feeling is that when people donate, that it really should be anonymous, or we should recognize simply the name of the organization. I think what to do with the funds has to be at the discretion of the leadership of the schools. I'm not a believer that people should be able to buy their way into naming rights. I don't even like to call City Field, City Field. I still call it Shea Stadium. So in my opinion, I think the decisions about what should be done in our schools should be made by our professionals, by our administrators, and by our Board members, and not necessarily by organizations that have the most money. If they are able to collect funds and they want to donate, that's wonderful. I think we would welcome that as a Board, but the spending decisions have to be at the discretion of the trustees.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer.
Thank you. I want to be careful with this topic because this is an issue that's come before the Board and is an open discussion item of the Board, something that we intend to discuss publicly. I am not comfortable coming to positions on discussions that would come before the Board until I get input from the community and hear from everyone. So I'm not going to opine on my position on this issue necessarily in order to remain open-minded, but I can say that when the decision was made to accept the donor's signatures for this particular—for the design lab and for the fitness center, we were very clear at that time that this would not be setting a precedent, that this was particular to that one situation, and that it was important that we discuss this issue in terms of gifting and gifting policy, and we're committed to doing that in the future. I don't believe that anyone in this community has any intent to put their names on buildings or walls and such, but I do believe that the Education Foundation, which committed to raising a significant amount of money for some significant spaces and improvements to our school, felt that... felt that the need to have those, that that opportunity would enable them to meet that goal. And the board was willing to support that at the time with a clear declaration that it was not a precedent and we were making no statement about ongoing signage and declarations.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, my experience with the Sturgess River Foundation is that fundraising, which is a big part of a foundation that's trying to raise money to find cures for diseases and to help the families that are involved in this. And one of the things that we always did was always recognize those folks that donated money. We didn't put their names on plaques or anything like that, but they do like to be recognized when they do make a donation. So, we always did recognize that. But the key element, I think, that everybody agrees on is that the use of the money has got to be at the discretion of the foundation or in this case, at the discretion of the board, not at the discretion of the person making the donation. That is not the way it should work. So, when we did it at Sturgess River Foundation, we would send a letter and thank them for their donation, but we would use the donation whether for research or with the families or to bring families to a meeting so that they could, because these families pretty much have a lot of trouble. We'd bring them to the meetings and we would pay their way. But that was not done in a way that geez, somebody got a plaque or something like that. It was just done because they were kind enough to make that donation and we sent them a letter thanking them for that donation. And I think something similar could be done here, but I'm not a big fan of putting names on plaques. That's not my deal. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Ms. Fuhrer. As a trustee, how would you stay abreast of and keep the community apprised of ongoing capital projects in the school district, including delays and cost increases?
A way that, as a board member, we stay apprised of what's going on in the schools where they took construction is we first, we now have a multi-year facilities plan. We did the building condition survey recently. It has to be done every five years. We now know all of the issues in our buildings, infrastructure, safety, health-related needs, also some aesthetic needs. They've been prioritized in terms of having to meet our vision and also in terms of health and safety and infrastructure requirements. So, we know everything right now, what needs to be done in all nine of our buildings. And Stuart Matty has put together a plan, an annual plan, that schedules each one of those investments over the next, I don't know if it's five or six years. We know what's going into our operational, to our budget every year now and why that those investments are important. So, as a board member, I'm going to follow that plan. They're the experts. They know what the priorities are. And in terms of being updated on construction, we hear regularly about change orders and we hear regularly about construction updates, but they're usually for big construction projects. There's a district construction committee made up of community members with areas of expertise in building and construction and engineering and architecture and design. And that committee does the day-to-day oversight of construction and we hear reports from them on their observations.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, having been involved in engineering and construction all my life and having worked with consultants all my life, I would say I would take a view that as a board member, you have to respect the people that are actually doing the day-to-day work. But as a board member, I would use my expertise, my knowledge of engineering, construction and working with consultants to ask what I would consider the right questions. And when you work with consultants or engineers, you have to be polite, you have to be deferential and you have to recognize their expertise. But at the same time, you have to be willing to ask the questions and be willing to probe to make sure you have gotten to what you're looking for. Sometimes you can see something on the surface and it looks fine, but when you probe a little bit and you get further into it, you find that there may be something there that you need to follow up on. So, I would use my background to look at what we're doing. When we start, when we embark on this capital program and we've got this construction going on throughout the various schools and Green Acres, I will be keeping an eye on it, to be frank about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
I agree with what both of the other two candidates have said. I think as a board member, it's critical to ask good questions, to listen to the data and to make decisions based on the facts. But your question was really to communication. And I think, as Pam outlined, it's important for the board to communicate to other board members. But I think just as important is for the board to be able to communicate with the broader population of, the broader community. I think my experience as a Vice President at NBC and a producer at NBC has given me very strong communication skills. First, as a journalist, I understand the value of communication and I have the skills to communicate. I think it's very important in terms of the residents feeling that the board is transparent and open to feel that there's open and honest communication. So, as a board member, I would make it a priority to really over-communicate because when you are on a board, you feel as if you've discussed an issue to death. But then you go out into the community and people aren't even aware of the fact, for example, that there was a bond vote. So, I think over-communication is often the key.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Mr. Crouch. As a trustee, how would you exercise fiscal responsibility while maintaining and enhancing the quality of our schools?
First, the quality of the school is number one. Number two, the fiscal responsibility has to bear on how we manage our budget, how we manage the work that's going on, how we manage the programs and to make sure the fiscal aspect of it is proper. I think it would be the oversight of all of the various organizations in the school system that are using those funds to make sure they're being used in a responsible manner and that we're not going to have cost overruns in different areas. But the quality should not change. It should be the application of the funds in a proper manner to make sure that what needs to be done and that they're budgeted for to be done are done within the budget amount of money.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
Well, I think that question gets at the very heart of what it means to be a board member. As board members, it's our responsibility to balance the fiscal constraints against our goal of having strong and safe schools. I think there have been particular challenges this year that have made that more complicated. For example, the new regulations about deductibility of taxes. I think there are many families in Scarsdale for whom the $10,000 cap on deductibility won't even cover their property taxes. So, their taxes are going up. And I think when we look at taxes, we have to consider not only the school taxes, but the taxes that people are facing across the board. So, that's one issue. And the second issue involves the regulations around the tax cap. When you make a decision about your school budget in one year, you're really setting a base for future years. So, I think it's, I think that it's inherent upon the board as fiduciary, in their fiduciary responsibility to make sure that they are keeping in mind not overburdening our residents with high taxes. But at the same time, you know, people don't move to Scarsdale to go because of the Starbucks. They move here because of the schools and they expect the schools to be top-notch and everyone's property values are maintained when our schools are strong and safe and people continue to want to buy houses in Scarsdale because of the schools. So, if I had to err on one side, I would say keep our schools as strong as possible and make sure that we are able to maintain the types of...
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I didn't see this.
Ms. Fuhrer?
I agree completely with the other two candidates. Budgeting and fiscal responsibility is of paramount concern. It's a critical responsibility of the board. And maintaining a quality education comes from understanding our vision and all the components of the vision and then budgeting so that every expense supports that vision. You want to make sure that there's nothing ancillary, that everything is focused and is happening for a reason. Good planning ensures us to have targeted budgeting. Planning for facilities, and this is exactly what we've just done, is have this longer, long-term plan for all of the capital improvements that we will be including in the budget on an annual basis for the next five years plus. Also, good planning on, for the budget projections generally. We just got a five-year projection on the budget. It's not binding, but it looks at historical trends and it looks at some very key assumptions. And predicting that out five years, even with volatility, is allowing us to have, prepare for unforeseen circumstances. To maintain our quality education, we stick to the vision. We make sure that we look for efficiencies, economies of scale, shared services, outsourcing versus in-sourcing costs and make sure that we can be fiscally responsible and all of our empty nesters can remain in town.
Thank you. This next question, we will begin with Ms. Singer. What is the best way to address differences of opinion among board members or between the board and the administration?
I think there will always be differences of opinion between board members. And I think this is probably one of Scarsdale's greatest assets, that we have activist citizens, all of whom want to expend their time and their energy engaging in our schools and in our village affairs. Diversity of views is a strength. It is not a weakness. I think it's important for everyone to have the opportunity to share their points of view during public comment, at open meetings in the village and at the school board. At the school board level, though, I think after a decision is made, I think it's inherent upon all of the members of the school board to then get behind that decision and support it, even if it wasn't the outcome that they wanted. I think it's a responsibility of a school board member to support the collective decision after it's been made.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer?
Would you just mind repeating the question, please?
Certainly. What is the best way to address differences of opinion among board members or between the board and the administration?
Okay. So, as Allison said, diversity of opinion is so important in board discussions. It's important to receive as much information and perspective as you possibly can. That makes a stronger decision. Having people come at it from different angles and different perspectives is what Scarsdale is all about. And then you discuss and I look forward to hearing people who have perspectives different than I. And the way that you can respect those differences and not have difficulties with the decisions is knowing that you're all here for the same reason. You're all here in support of equality education and excellent student achievement and learning. And with everyone on the same page, you start developing an excellent level of trust and mutual appreciation. And with that trust, you're in a collaborative effort and you know you're all working towards the same thing. So, yes, you're going to have differences of opinion, but in the end, you make a decision and you stick with it and the same thing works with the administration. If you have a good relationship with the administration, if you have established that you're working towards the same goals, that you're committed to the same vision, that you're here for the students and the quality of education, then you can work together and understand you're not always going to agree, but you're willing to work through the problems and maybe make adjustments and come to maybe a better solution by merging alternatives. And that consensus building is a critical component of board work. It works with board members and with administrators.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, first off, the most important thing in these discussions when they are different and different opinions is respect. We need to treat each other with respect at all times. We need to talk in tones that are respectful. We need to try to understand each other's position. Everybody has their own opinion and maybe five of us agree one way and two people agree another way. It doesn't mean that the five are right and the two are wrong. It means that we have different ways to see things and that we should discuss them. We should try to find a common ground. You usually can find a common ground if you're willing to work at it because as my colleagues here have said, that we all have the same interest at heart and that is the best education for our children. That's why we're all here. And so, knowing that and knowing that we have a common goal, if we address each other with respect and we probe to find out what the differences of opinion are, we usually can come to a common goal and then you can collaborate forward and go forward as a unit. It works the same way in business. You will have different opinions in business when you're working and what you will work to try to find out what the common goal is and then you will try to figure out what's the best way to achieve that because there's always more than one way. And then, once you've figured out what the group thinks is the best way, then that's where you go forward. But you go forward as a unit. You don't go forward as individuals. So, we're all saying the same thing about that, that you really need to come together. And that's the same as being a board member or working with the administration, that you have to try to find common ground. And I think that that's achievable if we continue the dialogue to the point where we find all of the things that we all agree upon. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin now with Ms. Fuhrer. As a trustee, what process would you recommend for developing a long-range strategic plan for Scarsdale schools? And what do you consider to be the role of the broader community in the process?
The broader community guides our vision. It guides our values and it guides our priorities. We do have SET 2.0, which is our district's vision. It has a number of components like non-sibby, global alliance, wellness, maker space, design thinking. And those have come from years and years of community commitment to those issues, interest in those issues and supporting investment in those components through budgeting. So, ongoing budgeting gives us a lot of clues on the values and priorities of the community. But in addition, you need to get them out. You need to ask the community for them more often. You need to hold forums. You need to talk about particular topics and focus groups on sustainability, on wellness, on safety. And so, those community committees and those focus groups provide direction to the board on the values and the priorities. We do have a strategic plan and it's created by the faculty, but it's guided by the community. And when the board embraces that vision, you know you're moving forward as a collective group to support students and their education.
Thank you. Mr. Certainly. As a trustee, what process would you recommend for developing a long-range strategic plan for Scarsdale schools? And what do you consider to be the role of the broader community in that process?
Well, the first thing I would do is I would make sure that we all had the same vision. Working with that vision, then you would develop basically a strategic plan for how you wanted to go forward. But what I think we would do with that is you would take that strategic plan and you would work it out amongst, I would say, the board and the administration together. Try to get what we think would be a strategic plan going forward for the future with the school system. But then, take it out from there and take it out to the community and use as much of our communication skills as we have to get that out to the community for the community to give feedback into that strategic plan. Whether we would use insight or insight plus other means or emails, but we would need to get that plan out to everybody. It should not be something we just do internally if we're going to make a really massive strategic plan for everything. I think we should have the whole community involved in where we're going. So, we'd like, we'd get it together, we'd work it out first and then, once we've got it worked out, then we would go out to the various community organizations, bring in the PTA, bring in the neighborhood association, bring everybody into that because everybody in Scarsdale is interested in the education system. That's why we're all here.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
I agree with Pam that the community has to play a major role in developing a long-term plan. And I agree with Woody that a plan has to be based on a collective vision. But I think the reason we do a plan every five or so years is because there are new studies and new research that are constantly being done. And I think a new plan has to be based on what we've learned through research. I think there are studies being done on new models of inclusion, many of which we have incorporated into the district over the last four years. I think there are new studies on way to mitigate stress in our students and reduce anxiety. I think there are other types of mental health studies that we can learn from and implement in our schools. in our schools. I think there are new studies being done on ways to differentiate instruction, ways to support teachers who are teaching in heterogeneous classes, and ways to incorporate community-based and experiential learning. All of this is really based on the body of research that's being done at universities all over the United States and around the world. These are fact-based, tested, new types of interventions, and I believe that we owe it to our students and our faculty to have a long-term plan that is based on evidence.
Thank you. The final question from the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. We'll go first to Mr. Crouch. According to the National School Board Association, your school, quote, "Your school board is responsible for developing and adopting policies, curriculum, and the budget." How would you help develop policies, curriculum, and budget to keep Scarsdale on the cutting edge of education?
Well, let's start with the curriculum. I think the curriculum is critical for anything that we're going to do, and I think what we should probably do with that is bring together the various, members of the various organizations that support the system, also bring in members of the staff, the teachers, the principals, bring everybody that's involved in the educational system that works with the curriculum, should be brought in to get their opinions. I have seen where you can have different curriculums in different places, and I think the curriculum, it's, it's almost as critical as anything you can do to have a really good school system. So as much feedback as we could possibly get from the experts in this field to see how we could go forward, if we needed to change anything, if what we had was good as it is. What was the other point?
How would you help develop policies, curriculum, and budget to keep Scarsdale on the cutting edge of education?
The budget portion would flow, we'd set up a policies of how we, our policies would be number one, to be the best in the country, and what we need to do to be the best in the country. Right now, I think we're probably close to being the best school system in the country. We would take what we got there, we'd evaluate our strengths and work with our strengths as to the things that we want to go forward with, look for wherever we have a week.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
So as part of my professional work at the Autism Society, at the Autism Science Foundation, I have the opportunity to travel around the country, visiting school districts, looking at how they are implementing special education and mental health and wellness. And I think one way you'd want to build a plan is by looking at best practice. The good news, the great news, is that Scarsdale is way ahead of the curve when it comes to policies, when it comes to curriculum, when it comes to the fact that our teachers are well-respected by our students and our parents. Our class sizes are on target. We've made a commitment to maintaining low class sizes. Our students are achieving. They have opportunity to access wonderful extracurricular activities. We've made a commitment to art and music, science and technology. And every student is really able to find an opportunity to thrive, to develop his or her skills and make the most of them. That is not really the case in most districts. So we are already starting from a position of strength. That's not to say that there aren't many ways that we can continue to improve, and I think continuous improvement should be a hallmark of Scarsdale. It's what we ask of our students, and it's what we should expect from our board.
Thank you. Ms. Fuerer?
Thank you. Work on policies, curriculum, and budget is something that is a key component of board governance, and it all stems from allowing your administration to look at best practices, to do the research, to explore new thinking, to ensure the 21st learning is, and their critical components are being brought back to our district. We, we need to make sure that our policies continue to maintain student achievement, and we look to our cabinet, our administrators, to help us understand what key curricular areas need changing, need addressing. A lot of that comes from community input. What are our concerns? Are we focused on STEAM? Are we focused on technology? Are we focused on sustainability and wellness? And how can we get that into our curriculum? We do it with budgeting. We make sure that professional development is supported so that they can explore the best practices and the opportunities. We make sure that the Center for Innovation is funded so that they can provide grants to teachers who have passion in different areas and that they want to look and pilot new programs and have these kind of incubators of thought that then go to the Scarsdale Teachers' Institute, which then teaches courses and expands that information so that more teachers can explore those opportunities. And that helps support curriculum, and that drives our budget planning. And all of our policies should support that entire spectrum of activity, the creative thinking, the safety, the support systems, and everything else that ensures the functioning of our district in such a spectacular way.
Thank you. We've come now to the end of the questions submitted by the League of Women Voters of Scarsdale. Okay. Yeah. Yes. And, and we will now have a, a series of questions submitted by the audience, and I would, would ask that the candidates speak a little closer into the microphone there. I guess there's not quite loud enough, so either pull them closer or speak from the diaphragm. This, so now, these are nine questions that were submitted from the audience or by the audience, and this first question will go to Ms. Singer. How would you ascertain Scarsdale community values and priorities regarding school issues? And how would you incorporate this understanding into board discussion and decision-making?
Well, I think the best way to understand what the community is interested in is to ask the community. As I, as I've said, I believe very strongly in the importance of not only listening to public comment, but acting on public comment. I think what's wonderful about Scarsdale is that we have a culture of volunteerism. We really don't, we really don't need to go out and tell people, you know, you should get more involved. Everyone is involved, everyone has an opinion, and I think that's our greatest strength. So, can you read the rest of the question? It was...
How would you ascertain Scarsdale community values and priorities regarding school issues? And how would you incorporate this understanding into board discussion and decision-making?
Right. So also, as I've said, I think as a person who often gives a public comment, I feel that when I'm giving public comment, it's because I have particular expertise. And I think expertise is something to be valued. I think often in our society, we look at expertise and sometimes we call it conflict of interest, but in fact, it's really expertise. So I, as a board member, will listen very carefully to public comment, will respect the fact that people take the time to come and give public comment, to write in with their comments if they're not able to attend board meetings. I also think it's important for the board members to be out in the community, not just waiting for residents to come to the board, but for the board members to be out at events, out at Little League, out at the pool.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Singer.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. It's a long question. Ms. Fuerer?
It's two questions. Community engagement is critical, and community input should be used to inform decisions and practice. I am committed to providing the community regular information to ensure that they are informed about our schools and our programs and our progress. I believe that full community participation is essential for our collective success. I know that volunteering and political advocacy are critical elements of local control and in influence in school life in Scarsdale, so we must go out of our way to ensure that the community has ample opportunity to be informed, an ample opportunity to communicate their thoughts, suggestions, concerns, and ask questions, and then we need to have the opportunity to be able to answer them. At board meetings, we now take a time at the end of the meeting to answer any of the public comments that we can to clarify information and to get answers out immediately. We respond to emails with clarification, and often we readdress them with frequently asked questions or a list of questions from previously asked forums to ensure that everyone is regularly informed of what the community has brought to us previously and what the answers to those questions are. So frequently asked questions are very important. Being available out and about the community is a terrific way to get access to that information. It's important to ensure that all stakeholders are involved, ensure that parents and students and community members and administrators and building principals and the board all have a shared voice in declaring and, and working through our values and priorities in this district.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, first off, I think that community involvement is extremely important and that we should be reaching out to the communities as much as possible to get their input. When they do come to our board meetings, that we encourage them to speak and to give them the respect they deserve when they, when they speak, to, if we're going to respond, respond respectfully. What, what I think we really need to do with this, to try to create more of a dialogue between the board and the community. And getting out into the community, whether it's like Valducci's or something like that, but, but getting out into the community and meeting with the, with the neighbors and talking to them about what's going on and getting their feedback. We've all got children in the school system, and we talk to other neighbors and find out what, what's on their mind. I mean, there will be those that come to the board meetings and will get their input directly at the board meeting, which is, which is a good way. But I think that we need to, maybe we, as, as board members, would be going out and make time to meet with the PTA organizations, make time to meet with the principals, make time to meet with neighborhood association folks, get, and just get out into the community and ask them what their concern, what are they looking for for us as board members and as their leaders in the educational system.
Thank you. We begin the next quest, round of questions, the next question with Ms. Fuerer. What do you believe is the board's role in curriculum review, and how would you improve
One of the board's responsibilities, one of our primary questions is why. We also ask how much, but we ask why. When our cabinet, when our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction comes to us and makes presentations on the number of curricular areas, all we do all weekend is we look at the board packet and we ask questions for clarity. We ask questions to help inform the public so that when the presentation comes to the public on the following board meeting, that our questions have been answered and our questions help fully inform the public. So in development of curriculum, we want to ensure that teachers take the lead, that again, they are looking for best practices, they are looking to their passions, they're looking to their interests, they're looking to 21st century components of learning and of teaching, and that they are able to test pilot those situations and they're able to bring them into the Scarsdale Institute where the teach, where they can teach other teachers about them, and that initiative can grow. And it's very important that as we talk about curriculum, we review existing curriculum, we assess with data its impact, and we reiterate when we need to, to ensure that it's having the greatest impact on learning. If we continue to follow that process, we are being forward-thinking, we are continuing to grow, and we are maximizing our student achievement.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, I think curriculum is probably one of the most important things that we do. And when we get a request for a change in the curriculum, it really has to be vetted very carefully. It has to be probed, it has to be studied, has to be really looked at from all different angles. And if it's a good thing, then we should make that change, but we shouldn't just take, we, we are not experts in curricula ourselves, but the people that are making these recommendations to us will be experts, and we need to be going back to them and questioning and asking enough questions to make sure that we understand what's going on and why that particular change in the curriculum would be a good thing. So I would think that we would be needing to go back through the, I think there's a process already in place that they have to follow to make a curriculum change, but just go back and make sure that that process has been followed and that the right people have been involved, and if there's any doubt about it, then take it back to the, to the people that brought up the curriculum and bring the question, don't just ignore it, but go back and discuss the curriculum with the people that want to make the change to the curriculum. And then, once that's all done, then you can make some decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
I, I agree. I think this is a case where the board should rely on the expertise of the outstanding educational professionals who we, who we hire to run the schools. I think the board's responsibility with regard to curriculum is to ensure that we are, we have tools to support differentiation of instruction and making sure that we have resources to support different types of learners so that we are able to personalize instruction for the different learning styles that different students will bring to their classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch, we begin with you for this next question. What examples from your work or volunteer experience illustrate your ability to think independently and support group decisions?
Well, that's a very interesting question. In my business, which is the utility business, building power plants and transmission systems, everything is pretty straight. Engineering is pretty solid, but if you start to get creative, you can make some major breakthroughs. And I'm going to give you an example of something that I've been working on, and that is, I've got nondisclosure agreements with everybody that I'm working on with this, but if you've got electricity, you've got AC electricity, and you've got DC electricity. We all know AC. AC is everywhere now. And DC sits there, and if you take a DC circuit, take an AC circuit and convert it from an AC circuit to a DC circuit, you can take a, take like Indian Point. Indian Point is going offline. And when Indian Point goes offline, 2,000 megawatts that go down to New York City for, for the city is lost. But if you build a DC transmission line from upstate to Buchanan, right outside of Indian Point, you can have a virtual generator at Indian Point, which would be the same as having a power plant in New York City, which is required for reliability. That's something that you don't normally see, but that's completely outside the box. And when I talk to people about it in my business, they, they are like amazed that that is such an innovative way.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. Ms. Singer?
So I'm going to give an example or some examples from my term as Chair of Scarsdale Child. Back when I was Chair of Child, we worked closely with the administration to make important changes that we felt would benefit students in the long run and would serve the common good long-term, but did cause some issues in the short term that we had to really work through with families. So during my tenure was when we first brought inclusion classes to Scarsdale. The first inclusion class was actually kindergarten at Quaker Ridge. We stopped the practice of having our special education students be forced to change buildings every two years. We used to have students start in Fox Meadow for kindergarten and first, then they would move to Edgewood for second and third grade, and then to Green Acres. So, you know, we were asking our most vulnerable students to change buildings every two years. That's something we now wouldn't ask our regular education students to do. And we also made the change at the middle school, where instead of having special education students in all four houses, which made it extremely difficult for the teachers to provide the services to all those children that they needed and were entitled to in their IEPs, we made the decision to select a house each year where the special education students would be able to receive instruction. Those all made sense in the long-term, but for the students who's, for the families of those students who were affected, it was very difficult, and we needed to work through very specific situations with those families. We did it by talking to them and understanding their needs and making sure that we considered those needs and acted upon them. that we considered those needs and acted upon them when we made those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Ms. Fuhrer?
Thank you. I would think that recent examples of acting independently and yet supporting group thinking or group decision-making happens every day on the board, particularly when we're talking about budget decisions. There are certain components that maybe I am not fully, actually, what happened more often last year was that I wanted expenses in the budget. I wanted to attend to certain needs. I wanted to make sure that we were spending the money on renovating the bathrooms in the middle school and other things. And as the board moved along, there was some concerns about the tax levy, about the numbers we were reaching, and there was some decision to pull some of those costs and deal with them at a later date. And that wasn't exactly what I supported and discussed that at the table, but then supported the budget generally speaking, and of course, expressed my support for the budget as a whole going forward. I certainly had to act and think independently as PT Council President when, for years and years, we were coming to the table with the teachers' union and we weren't discussing any, we were discussing issues, but we were coming to no significant resolution. We were at an impasse about parent-teacher communication and about parent input into teacher evaluation and the tenure process. It wasn't something, it's belly of the beast stuff. It wasn't easy to talk about, but I kept persisting and through hard work, we were able, in a couple significant efforts, we were able to get to the table with the teachers, declare that we were on the same table, I mean, on the same side, declare that we had the same goals in mind, and work with them to ensure that we could talk better and have more, better discussions about parent input into evaluations and assessments.
Thank you. The next question, we begin with Ms. Fuhrer. If elected, how will you foster communication, collaboration, and consensus between all members of the community and the school district administration?
Building a consensus and coming to a consensus means that you understand the different points, the different viewpoints, all the different perspectives on an issue. And then you come to a solution and then you develop buy-in. It is important to have active listening and to engage in extensive two-way communication on these issues. Facilitating the process of exploration and coming to a consensus decision was something that I did often, working with budgeting and programming in the PTAs and working with parents and teachers and administrators and the full community, and establishing the budgets and coming to consensus there. Also, as PT Council President, I worked on building a consensus with faculty and parents and the administrators, working towards this parent-teacher communication document. I am very experienced in this issue. I know what's most important is that all stakeholders are fully informed and are available to participate in the issue and that all of their concerns and interests are heard. They have ample opportunity to express them. We must look at different alternatives, and sometimes alternative solutions merge to find a better solution. Communication and collaboration are key components of good leadership. They ensure that you're listening to each other. They ensure that they mean that you're understanding what we're saying. It means that we're willing to be open-minded and we're willing to be persuaded to think differently and to act a little differently. Knowing that we're not always right is a key component of board leadership.
And I have to apologize because, Ms. Singer, I should have asked you this question first, but please.
I'll take her next question.
That's right.
My apologies. Would you like me to read the question again, or are you?
No, I'm good. I agree with what Pam has said about leadership and collaboration. And what I would add is that I think it's important when you're on a board and there seems to be lack of collaboration, or it feels like people are being combative, or are just acting out of anger, to remember that often it's because when they're coming at issues that affect their children particularly, or their families, they're coming at it from a place of love, right? And they're experiencing sometimes fear that a board is going to make a decision that they think might negatively impact their child. And so sometimes that fear can be masked by anger. So I, in addition to everything Pam said about leadership, I would just say that it's important when you are in a leadership position to just keep in mind that you are there to not only listen, but to try to understand why sometimes people are behaving emotionally and not just respond to their emotion with more emotion, but to keep a level head, to make sure that you are looking at data and fact and making decisions that serve the common good, that respect the concerns that people who are affected by your decisions may have, explaining to them in a very transparent and open way how you're making those decisions, why you're making those decisions, but realizing that no one wants to be combative. People often just want to make sure that their children are protected and are well-served.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. Mr. Crouch?
Collaboration, working together are critical. I'll give you an example from my business life on this. Myself and another vice president had two independent groups, and they were mutually, not exclusive, but they were overlaps. And we wanted our groups to work better together. So he and I said, let's get together and let's bring these two groups together. And we'll say, hey, we're here, we want to work together. Well, we did that, and they nearly killed each other. So we broke off, went back to our corners, and Charlie and I said, we got a lot of work to do. So we spent a lot of time working with those two individual groups, explaining to them that they did have to learn to work together because we had a common goal. It took us a while, but it was just a matter of continual dialogue back and forth between our two, myself and Charlie, and then our teams. And we kept, within six months, we had them working together. But if you work at it, you can make it happen. I'm good.
Thank you. And I'm just going to continue with the regular rotation. Hopefully you won't object to that. So this next question, we will begin with Ms. Fuhrer again, unless you, well.
Whatever you want.
That's fine, right?
We'll be collaborative.
What is your view of the role of the school board in advocacy in education?
Oh, that's a great question. Being an advocate for public education is a primary responsibility of school board members. You know this because the Westchester-Putnam School Board and the New York State School Board have legislative advocacy committees. They have legislative advocacy forums. They have legislative advocacy newsletters that we receive regularly. It is critical that we stay informed of national and state and local issues. I think what we need in this town is a district legislative advocacy committee. I think there are a lot of people very interested in public education and the issues around it. We need to have a committee that's made up of parents, community members, administrators, board members, principals, who can represent their constituencies and come to the table and say, this is what's interesting to us, this is what we're thinking about, this is what concerns us. And maybe at the table, we all can't agree to take the same position, but that doesn't matter. But then maybe there are issues that come to the table that we can all take the same position on, and we should all be, and then we can all work together and issue a joint statement and talk to our legislators about those issues. It's important to be savvy about what's happening in public education, not just in Scarsdale, but in our neighboring communities in terms of supporting non-CIB and just protecting publication across the board. So I am fully supportive of in-depth legislative advocacy, advocacy activity. I reinvigorated the Legislative Advocacy Committee on PT Council. We need to maintain a commitment.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, advocacy is extremely important, and I believe that we as a board should work towards advocacy with our legislatures in Albany and in Westchester County. I think we should collaborate with the other school boards in our area to, if we have a common issue, that we take it together to the legislature or to the county or to the state. But I think it's an important issue for us to be advocates and to get all our positions together and as a board be in total agreement on what we're going to advocate for. And then we go. And I think we should actually work with other school boards. I think to be strength and unity, if we can get more school boards that want to do the same thing that we want and advocate for it together.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
So I think as parents, as citizens, we are all advocates. I think we all have to be advocates for our students. I think we have to be activist advocates for our students. I know there are some regulations that govern the, what members of boards are able to do in terms of specific legislative advocacy, but I think it is important to comment and participate on legislative issues. In my professional experience, I've had a lot of opportunities to be involved in legislative advocacy. I was directly involved in getting the Combating Autism Act of 2006 passed in the US Congress. That was key landmark legislation that recognized the educational and other civil rights of students with disabilities. What I learned in that experience is that when you are advocating or working as part of a team, the key is to just not let perfection be the enemy of the good, that the key to advocacy, like the key to good board work, is to try to find something that appeals to everyone. No one is going to walk away feeling they got everything, but everyone should walk away feeling they got something. And I, that is the approach that I would take as a board member in terms of activist and advocate issues.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer?
Are you sure? Oh, she already answered.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards.
You can agree with everything I said.
So, I'm sorry, now I've lost, oh, we're done with that question, aren't we? Is that right? We've all three answered that, yes, I'm sorry. This question is from Ms. Singer. What do you bring to the board that is unique?
That's a great question. I bring my unique combination of life experience to the board, and that includes my experience as the parent of a special needs child and the parent of a student who thrived in the regular education curriculum. I bring my professional experience, my work at NBC News, where I learned communication skills and the importance of transparency and of communicating with the public. I bring my educational experience, which involves, which includes a bachelor's in economics and an MBA from Harvard Business School. So I am very comfortable with budgeting in my business experience at NBC and at the Autism Science Foundation. I spend a lot of time creating budgets, working with consulting firms, working on personnel issues, negotiating union contracts. I will bring all of those experiences to the board. I will also bring my 15 years of experience in the last few, the last 15 years, immersed in mental health and wellness issues. I am up on all of the, all of the latest studies about how to improve wellness in our schools for not only our students, but for faculty and staff. I also bring extensive experience in volunteerism in Scarsdale, as well as having served on many policymaking boards at the state level, at the federal level, and right here in Westchester County.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer?
I think what's most unique about me is that I am a current Board of Education member. I have served on the Board of Education in Scarsdale for three years, so my experience there is unique. I have been, received multiple trainings. I have been, participated in five labor contract negotiations. I attended all of the 2018 bond presentations and deliberations. I've received training in superintendent evaluations, in negotiations and legal issues, in social and emotional wellness. I've attended technology summits. I've had the governance seminar, and I've had the financial guidance seminar. I also have had significant and direct impact on all of our schools and have benefited many, many students. My 14 years of volunteer work has been directly in support of student achievement and the students in the school. Even when I was in the Junior League, I gave Wayside Cottage tours to classes and to scout troops. When I was on the League of Women Voters, I brought students inside Albany back to the high school. I am always asking, what can I do for the students of Scarsdale? I contributed to the creation, I was an integral component of the creation of the Parent Educator Partnership Guide, now on the district's website. This guide provides direction for parents, teachers, and students on how to communicate. It defines more reasonable norms of behavior, and that effort led to work increasing student surveys in the schools, class and teacher evaluations, and better parent input into tenure decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, I would say that my uniqueness is the fact that I'm an engineer. I think that's probably a little unusual for going for the board. But in my life as an engineer, I have done a lot of things. I've built a lot of stuff in the state of New York. I have run billion-dollar projects. I've handled billion-dollar budgets. I have developed billion-dollar budgets, and I have met every one of those budgets. I have built power plants in the city of New York. I have built transmission lines across the state of New York. I've built underground cables across Westchester County and underneath the Long Island Sound and across Long Island. And I have worked with all of the communities in those areas. I was the person that would go to the communities and talk to them about the technical issues that were involved. And they were always complicated issues, but we always had good dialogue and everything that we ever did was always well-received. I remember once I was going through Bronxville, and the mayor was concerned that I'd have her streets torn up forever. And I told her, I said, Mayor, we will be out of here before you know it. Because the way I work, I move very fast. And when I was done, I went back to see the mayor and I said, we're done. She said, you're done? Yes, I said, we're done. But I very, one other thing I want to get into is I'm also unique in that I'm with the Sturgue Weber Foundation. I did advocacy with them a lot. The last time I did advocacy with them, I went down to Congress, met with Congressman Engel, and got him to get legislation, not legislation, get the NIH to include Sturgue Weber on their research. So now Sturgue Weber gets research through NIH.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch.
You're welcome.
This next question goes first to Ms. Fuhrer. Please give an example to demonstrate you understand one critical issue facing Scarsdale students.
I have a daughter as a first year at Wellesley College right now. She had a really tough time in high school with anxiety and stress. She couldn't attend all her classes because of the pressures that she was facing. She had some great faculty who helped her through those issues and can continue to maintain her wellness. But I know that the stress at the high school is particularly significant. I know from data and evidence and surveys that our kids are really feeling the pressure and that the wellness efforts at the high school need to address stress trigger reduction. We have a great survey that understands what the kids, where they really feel the pressure points are. They've talked to us as a board. We continue to listen to them, and we will continue to survey them to understand what needs to be done. We created some different programs at the school to help particular students with their anxiety, but I'd like to be able to help the general population on a regular daily basis to find ways to reduce their stress, to minimize their triggers, so that they don't feel like they have to stay home, so they feel that they can be, that they could really have a love of learning, that they can really go to the school and be inquisitive and be there and enjoy themselves and not feel the pressures of grades or college. It's a difficult challenge, but I know that our faculty is up to finding these solutions. I know that our leadership is committed to finding the solutions. It is of paramount importance that we continue to focus on this in the district. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
That's a tough one. In my opinion, and this is my opinion, is that the school system here is the greatest school system in the country. And having said that, I agree with Pam about the pressures. There are a lot of pressures. And I, I don't know how to put this, but it strikes me is that there's so many things that are expected of our kids. And it, I think we need to look at the way, without changing the system, but at the way maybe we can moderate the system so that the pressures on our children are not so great. I don't know if I've said that eloquently or not, but I think we need to figure out a way to try to manage the pressures that we are putting on our children with all of the stuff that's expected of them from the schools. I mean, it's a lot of stuff. I mean, it's, it's a lot of stuff that is expected of them. The homework is a lot. The testing is a lot. I mean, we are the best, but, but there's a price for that, and we, I just, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that that's something that we should look at.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
I agree, and I, I agree with Pam that mental health and wellness issues are paramount. I have spoken at length in response to other questions, and I have extensive comments on that issue on my website. So I'm going to choose another issue, which I believe is the importance of making sure that we are able to continue to offer all students personalized instruction, differentiated instruction, and a wide array of extracurricular opportunities so that each student is able to find what he or she does best and find the opportunity for success. So whether that be in art, whether that be in robotics, whether that be speech and debate, whether that be science research, whether that be Gaga in the elementary schools, we want to make sure that we are being creative in finding opportunities for every student to experience success and to experience gratitude, because those are also mitigators of anxiety and really feed right into my overall goal of making sure that mental health and wellness are priorities.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Mr. Crouch. As a board member, how do you think issues pertaining to adding new curriculum and programs, such as, for example, a new world language, be addressed, and how do you see your role in that process?
A new world language?
Well, that was, that's an example. Let me read the question again, because it is, it is a bit complex. As a board member, how do you think issues pertaining to adding new curriculum and programs be addressed, and how do you see your role in that process?
Well, first off, I think it should go through the process. I know that we have a curriculum process that, that, that any new curriculum has to go through. It has to be vetted that way. So there's experts do that, number one. And number two, once it's been vetted, then I think that the board, we have a responsibility to make sure that it is within the bounds. I mean, if it was something like, you know, a new world language, I think that would be, you know, something that we, that the board should really take a look at. I think that would be beyond just the scope of the curricula guys doing all their stuff to make sure it would work. So I think that would really be almost, to me, a major issue that the board would have to look at. Be independent of even just accepting all the recom, normally you would just, it makes sure the process was done properly and that the, that the recommendations will work properly. But something of that nature, I think it's outs, would be outside the norm, to be frank about it.
Ms. Singer?
We live in a constantly changing world, and we ourselves need to be constantly changing and adapting. Every day, there are new advances in technology. There are new advances in communication. In many cases, it's our students who know more about these things than we do as adults. But it's important to make sure, as board members, that we are staying up to date on the new thinking, on the new learning, on studies that are being done to determine the best ways to incorporate these new changes and new ideas into the curriculum. I think, as I've said before, we expect continuous improvement and achievement from our students, and it's incumbent upon the board to maintain the same level of focus and commitment to continuous learning, lifelong learning, and continuous improvement.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer?
In terms of curricular development in the district, it really starts out with the teachers. It really starts out with them being aware of their business, of their industry, and what's going on, what the trends are, what the changes are, what they see is interesting. They can, they're always paying attention. They're reading the right material, and they're looking at what's happening across the country and across the globe. So they're able to go to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and say, "I am interested in this. This is something where I see a change. This is something I think we should pursue." Teacher buy-in and initiation is the most important part of curricular development and curricular change. They need the autonomy to explore passions, and then bring it, again, I've said this before, to the Scarsdale Teachers Institute, an outstanding organization that allows their interests to be tested, to be taught to others and explored. And then, that goes to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, who is able to say, "Here's a new process. Here's new pedagogy. Here's how we want to look at it deeper and bring it into our district." As a board, we're governors. We're not managers. Dealing with curriculum is management. It's not really our purview, but it's our responsibility to ensure that they have all of the freedom and the opportunity to be on the cutting edge and continue to do the research and do the testing and implement with teacher buy-in so that, so that it's effective and efficient and can be revisited and reiterated.
Thank you. Well, we've come to our last question now, and we'll begin with Ms. Singer. What is the single most important role of a school board member, and how do you envision yourself fulfilling that responsibility?
I think the most important responsibility of school board members is to maintain strong schools. As I've said, people move to Scarsdale because we have great schools. I think the balancing responsibility is to make sure that the taxes that we ask our citizens to pay are not such that people can no longer afford to live in Scarsdale and take advantage of those wonderful schools. I think another key responsibility is to make sure that we are constantly listening to what residents in the district have to say. We are representatives. It is our responsibility to represent the collective voice of the community on the board, not necessarily our own views, but the collective views of the residents of Scarsdale, and to work towards the common good. I think it's important to bring energy and enthusiasm and experience to all of the decision-making, to focus on facts and evidence when making decisions, to not let emotions take hold and make decisions based on, based on emotions, but to ask tough questions, to make, to get input from people who have specific expertise, and then to make decisions based on facts. I think it's important for board members to have an open mind when it comes to decisions before the board, to listen to diverse viewpoints, to not be afraid to change their point of view when they've heard the facts, the evidence, and the views of their fellow citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Fuhrer?
Schoolchildren are the ultimate focus of an, of an effective school board. That's always where you want to, you always want to be thinking about what's in this for the kids? How does this benefit the kids? So good school, a good school board is committed to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and for high expectations in quality of instruction. You want to make sure that you have a vision that supports that and that you set goals towards that vision. You want to always be, a good board wants to have shared beliefs and value the possibilities of what's, what's possible for a student in his or her learning and what's possible for the system in terms of its ability to teach all students in a differentiated way at a high level. In order to support our students, we need to have strong collaborative relationships with faculty and with the community. It's important that we inform on a regular basis our community members and make sure that all key stakeholders, and there are many, are able to participate in goal-setting and goal-achievement. You need to have a collaborative relationship with your superintendent and work as a team from your respective roles so that you're working from positions of mutual trust. I think that if you're always guided by what's best for the kids, you will, you will be the most effective board possible.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch?
Well, I think the primary responsibility for us as a board would be to maintain Scarsdale as the best school system in the country. And everything that I would be doing would be to further that goal. And to further that goal, I think we need to work with the budget. We need to work with the, with the planning of, of the, whatever we're going to do with the infrastructure, and do that in a way that it goes forward smoothly, do that in a way that we have the money that we need to make sure that our educational system can stay, number one, and do the infrastructure. This infrastructure program, we're getting better, getting ready to embark upon is a lot of money, and we have to be very careful to make sure that that program is done effectively and that we do not blow the budget. I mean, it, it, I've been doing budgets all my life, and it, if you're not very careful, if you don't watch everything very carefully, if you don't make, ask the right questions, if you don't look in the right direction, you can, you can get into trouble pretty quickly. So I would, but I would say our primary focus is to make sure that the educational system here stays the best in the country. That's why everybody's here, and that's why our property values are where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we've come to the end of the question and answer part of this forum, and each candidate will now have 1 minute and 30 seconds for a closing statement, and we will begin in the opposite order, and which means that Ms. Fuhrer, you will go first.
Thank you. So I want to say thank you so much to the League for this opportunity, and thank you for, all of you for attending. This has been a really terrific process for me. I hope that you understand that I have a lot of qualities that have enabled me to be a good board member and to continue to be a good board member, and that my experience supports that effort directly and significantly. I also want to make sure you understand my passion for the students in this town, that I have made this a career, that this is where I've been focusing for 14 years. But I want to tell you that I believe that this election is actually about timing and balance. If we put two new board members on the board this year and two new board members on the board next year have to be put on, and then we have to put two more board members on the following year, that's six new board members in three years with one board member remaining in her fifth year. Nina Cannon's terrific, but we need more veterans to guide our new board members through a very, very difficult and steep learning curve. It's important that they get leadership from veteran board members. It's important that they get mentorship from, from, from veteran board members. It's really not a good thing to have that imbalance. New voices, fresh perspectives are critical to an effective board, but what's also very important is the balance of veterans and new members. And I really think it's incredibly important to keep my experience, the continuity, and my institutional knowledge to help guide this district through some very complicated tasks immediately ahead of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
So I also want to thank the League for organizing this wonderful evening for all of us. I want to thank those of you who came out to listen to our views, and I want to thank my fellow candidates. I learned a lot by listening to what you both had to say, and I really appreciate your well-considered views. I'm running for school board because I, as an expression of gratitude, I'm incredibly grateful for the wonderful experience both of my daughters had in Scarsdale, and I want to ensure that we maintain the types of schools that enable all students to thrive. I love hearing stories from my daughter's friends, from current students about what they're doing in school, their success, how wonderful the science research team is doing, how wonderful the debate team is doing. It's, it's very gratifying to see our students thriving, and it would be incredibly gratifying for me to feel that I was on a board that was helping to help those students reach their full potential. I bring a lot of energy. I bring a lot of enthusiasm. I bring a lot of experience. What I don't bring is any preconceived notions about issues that are before the board. I'm coming with an open mind. I'm very able to ask tough questions, but I've also worked in large organizations and I know how they run. I will make decisions based on facts and data, and I will make sure that we are communicating fully and openly with members of the community and listening to the views that they bring to the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crouch?
First, I want to thank the League for inviting us. We appreciate that. I want to thank my fellow candidates. It was very interesting to listen to them. They are very bright people. Very nice to be in that company. I'm here because Scarsdale Board Nominating, School Board Nominating Committee asked me and voted on me to be here. I went through the process twice. I didn't win the first time. I won the second time. But, so I want to thank them for the many hours they spent in vetting the candidates and, and selecting me. Now, having said that, the real reason I'm here is because of my grandchildren. I want to pay back because they have been getting a great education here. My, my son and daughter got a great education here, so I felt that something that I needed to do was to give this back to the community. I've got a tremendous amount of engineering and construction experience. I think I can make a real difference when we get into this program of infrastructure improvement. I think I can keep that program right on target. That's, that's my real strength. I will do everything I can to be a really, really good board member. I'm not nearly as sophisticated with all of the issues, but I can tell you, I'm a quick learner, and I've done a lot of stuff, and I've learned a lot of stuff, and I'm good at learning. And I know that, 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 you know, you say, "Well..." But I can, I can tell you, nobody would be, nobody would be disappointed if they voted for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've come to the end of the debate, and thank you all very much for coming tonight, and thank you for your questions, and please join me in thanking our three candidates. And, and before you leave, and before you leave, I want to remind you that Tuesday, May 15th, is voting day. The polls will be opened at the Scarsdale Middle School Gym on Maranick Road from 7:00 a.m. in the morning till 9:00 p.m. at night. So please, remember, every election counts, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.